Called meeting to order. Roll call, everybody is here except Jerry Allen. And he may come in during this or during the next part. Okay, item number two, at Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular agenda of August 6, 2019.
Yes, I'd like to talk about the CDBG appropriations that we'll be doing. I talked with some of the other Commissioners throughout the weekend, we wanted to kind of discuss what we're going to be appropriating to and give them a little brief overview of what the projects are and what they're going to be going towards. For those who don't know, CDBG is annually, we get federal funds that go towards improvements to areas in the community that need some help and the businesses and the services that serve those communities. And so every year we meet in order to be able to determine how to disseminate those funds. The determination that we made this year, well, we got an allocation this year of about $450,000. So that was fantastic. So appreciate the federal government for that chunk of change.
Do you know what it was last year? That's the size of a white cream.
It was a...
Four eighteen.
Yeah.
Four eighteen.
Yeah. Now generally, what, in the past, up until this year, we've had the loan that we had to pay off for the University District. And so this was the first year that all of those funds became available, which we weren't... we had a feeling was coming, but wasn't 100% positive that it was going to take place this year. So it was a fantastic surprise. It was excellent news. It was, you know, Christmas in, you know, July. So it was fantastic. The first thing that we addressed was community programs. One of the highest priorities that we pointed out this year that we need to focus on was youth programs and youth services. And so the first two allocations we made were to Booker T. Washington and Making a Difference, which both house an after-school program and when they can do summer programs. And so each one of those programs got $30,000 in order to be able to help bolster their programs. So I thought that was worthwhile. Also, Making a Difference is trying to make an expansion and they're moving. They've been working out of Longfellow Gym for the last couple of years. And so in order to be able to make that program, to be able to expand that program and make it more readily accessible to more kids in the community, they're making the move in order to be able to move into a building that I can't really say yet because they're still in the process and still working some things out. But it's going to be a substantial building that's going to be able to expand their services vastly. And so in order to be able to help contribute to that process and to that event, we allocated $125,000 to that particular program in order to be able to help them get what they need in order to be able to expand. So that was definitely worthwhile. Again, with the influx of all of that money, we weren't necessarily expecting. We opened up the door to some other programs that didn't necessarily meet the criteria we were looking for. Again, our highest priority was youth programs, youth services, and things of that nature. So the next one was the YWCA. They needed some furnishings in order to be able to help the folks who are needing support, that they support. So we dedicated $6,000, about $6,400 in order for that program, for the furniture that they were going to need in order to be able to support that program. ERDA is doing a micro-enterprise grant. And so we did a matching grant with them. ERDA is going to put up $5,000 and we agreed to put $5,000 towards that too in order to be able to help starting businesses or existing businesses expand and grow their particular programs. So we thought that was worthwhile as well. Then, of course, there's CDSA. CDSA does fantastic work in this community in order to be able to serve the underprivileged, the elderly, people who just generally need help. And so we were able to kick to them $125,000 in order to be able to help with our program. I believe the target was around $70,000 that they were looking for, but we were able to give them what they were looking for and then some more because we know that they can use it and they do very well with what it is that we give them each year.
Yeah, they do, but I thought, wasn't the previous allocation, was it like $7,000?
No.
What am I thinking of?
We dropped down to $50,000 one year and then $70 is what was recommended originally.
Okay.
There's another...
You're thinking of Metro Commission.
I'm thinking of Metro, okay.
Yeah. CDSA, with their emergency hazard repair, they basically use whatever money we give them and then they kick more into it. It's one of those, there's always a greater number of requests for what is frequently stuff like getting a heater repaired in the middle of winter, getting an air conditioner repaired in the middle of summer, plumbing leaks, keeping a roof. It's that kind of emergency repair and whatever we can allocate will get used.
Yeah, I serve on their board, so I know I don't have any problem with expenditure. What I did was confuse the HSA allocation with the CDSA.
The other, another program that we put money towards was the Emerson Middle School. They've got an excellent program where they deal with drones and it's a STEM program. It's a fantastic endeavor. We held off for that a little bit in the beginning because it was a school program and they have their, you know, their own little pot of money that you forefront. But the value that they bring and the contribution that they're going to bring to the community as a whole was just too big to pass up in order to be able to help them bring that as quickly as possible. So we put $15,000 towards that program. I don't think that's going to get them all the way there, but it's definitely going to get them a lot closer than where they were.
And that was at Emerson?
That is at Emerson, yes, sir. And so we also put towards Parks Pickleball Project. We've got some existing courts that are out there that are underutilized and so what we're going to do is we're going to renovate some of those courts, repave them, and make them into pickleball courts. I don't know if you all know, but pickleball is the way of the future. Everybody's playing pickleball nowadays. I haven't gotten that far yet, but it's a fantastic thing and anything we can do to get folks outside, you know, getting active, I think is going to be great for this community. We also, there's another park as well that has needed some, oh, it's ABC Park, I believe is what it was. ABC Park has some tables with covering. And so they've got some real rundown ones and so we're basically going to replace those and get some real nice ones in there that's really going to be a benefit to that park and the community as a whole.
And we're going to repair the roof on the back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So those were the allocations. I think this year we've been able to do substantially more and touch many more programs that we have in the past and I'm hoping we can continue that year after year, but hopefully that answers any questions and if not, I'm happy to answer whatever.
Do you have a committee?
Yes, we have a CDBG. Currently, right now, we have myself, Commissioner Norwood, a previous Commissioner, but Board Member now, Tammy Wilson, as well as David Mason. David, you're on the...
Jerry.
You know who's on the board. Jerry's on the board as well and we also have some vacancies, so we'll be looking to fill those. We pushed all the way to the end of the cycle and then we'll start looking at the board for changes and, you know, shuffling around. We like to give everybody an opportunity to have some input in what goes on on the board.
Sounds like you did a good job.
Yeah, appreciate it, Joe. Yeah, great work and spreading around and helped a lot of places that needed help. For those that don't know, the ABC Park is also where Miracle League is done, where they have the Miracle League games. So it's a great asset for part of the community that doesn't often get looked at, so I'm glad that you were able to find that.
It's good.
Thank you.
I do have one thing just to bring your attention on item 8.13, which was the Main Street contract.
Right.
Kelly wasn't able to be here today, but she did send me, when I sent her this, she mentioned that item 2C on corner notes was not a Main Street responsibility anymore. I'm not sure it ever was. That's a Keeping it Beautiful, Susie Mybergen and actually Marcy Jarrett working on that. So that's, so we made a modification on that. So this is the most current, it's the modified for you to consider tonight on that item.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have anything to discuss from the regular session? During none, we'll go to item three. Give sports tourism presentation by Rob Houston.
Well, good afternoon, evening, I guess. I'm Rob Houston. I'm the Communications Coordinator for Visit Enid. Been in that capacity since we started as an office back in 2010 with our Director, Marcy Jarrett. I'm going to talk today about growing sports tourism in Enid and here's some of the things that I'm going to be covering today. We'll define what sports tourism is according to the Big National Organization, National Association of Sports Commissions. We'll talk about how the research, travel research study back in 2018 that Visit Enid did with Young Strategies out of North Carolina encouraged Visit Enid to pursue more weekend events, including sports. How sports nationwide are considered recession-proof and how Enid has or is getting ready to build several sports venues that will help us to grow that sports tourism. So, okay, there's the definition of sports tourism. Leisure travel in order to observe or participate in a sporting event. And generally, that sporting event has to be the main reason for the travel. We're going there to watch our son play in a soccer tournament. That is considered sports tourism. So I got the first one checked off here pretty easily. The visitor survey, this was done in 20, it was released in March or April of 2018 and we started it about October of 17. And this is, we have this entire report, if anyone is interested in seeing it, I think it's about 150 pages long and it has every single verbatim comment that was made by any of the respondents. We polled our hoteliers as well as visitors and also our residents and our leaders as well. We got a lot of different responses to that. But this is an interesting subject, that overall spending per travel party, actually the average is 2.9 people per travel party, so roughly three. And look at the difference between leisure overnight and day trip and then business and day trip. 445 to 166, basically. So as you can see there, we want people to spend the night. Enid makes two to three times as much money per party on overnight visitors compared to day trips. So we've kind of switched our focus and we are now going more toward overnight segments. And then this shows that, this is the STAR report that gets sent to you each month and basically what it shows is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have a lot of folks staying in our hotels. But Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that occupancy goes way down. You can see it on the chart down there at the bottom. Is that...
Top button.
The top one? Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So you can see, 60% is kind of where we want to be, that's kind of the benchmark. And we're down here on Friday and Saturday nights. So what's going on on weekends that we can maybe pull some more people here? We think sports tourism is a great answer to that. So that defines number two. And now we go down to how sports nationwide are considered recession-proof. Now, this is a study from 2018 called Exploring Sports Tourism. And basically, we're spending about $800 billion globally on sports. And as you know, we're becoming a lot more health-conscious than we've ever been and so sports is a big way to continue to try to keep in shape. So capitalizing should be a goal for industry players and so that's where we're working toward. Now, this was a study done this past February, March by TD Ameritrade. And it says, "Parents say a third of their income goes toward covering their children's expenses, including sports." And they say 27% right here spend over $500 per month on their children's sports activities. And when you take this figure down here, now you're talking 80% that are spending at least $100 per month on their kids' sporting events. So that's a huge market that we, you know, have broken into to some extent and we want to continue to do more. And I won't read all of these, you can look at those, but 1 in 3 are taking fewer vacations, 1 in 5 are getting second jobs or delaying retirement. So there's a lot of things that our parents are doing to help our kids go to those soccer tournaments or go to those baseball or basketball tournaments and be part of those traveling teams. Back in last September or so, I went down to Foley, Alabama and researched their new sports tourism facility. And they've got 16 full-size soccer fields, they've built a brand-new event center on their complex, they have one hotel completely built, looking to build a second one. There's also the, there's a local Indian tribe that also built an amusement park right next door too, so that helps. But in talking to David Thompson, he's the Director of that complex down there, and he said that, you know, they had the oil spill back in 2010 and the beach tourism went way, way down, but sports tournaments kept coming. So that was our answer. Sports was a no-brainer. Foley stepped up, made the decision and the investment to make our city a sports tourism destination. Now, I only have one copy of this, but I will be very happy to pass this around. This gives you a lot more details on what Foley has and what I saw when I was down there. I'll be happy.
Population of Foley?
Population of Foley is about 17,000. They are located 10 miles north of Gulf Shores. So they're just 10 miles north of the beach. And actually, Gulf Shores is kind of a competitor with theirs because Gulf Shores offers the beach, you know, go to the beach and then you can go play. Foley's 10 miles north of there, so they kind of had to reinvent themselves. You can still get to the beach 10 miles away, but they have a lot of other things that are very close. So here's a couple more sports tourism facts for you. NASC reports 2.7 support travelers per competitor. So that means mom, dad, grandma, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, they're all traveling with these kids to go watch them play in these tournaments. There's high explore hours. You're not playing 24 hours a day, you're playing an hour, two hours, you know, or two hours at a couple different times. What else is there to do in that host city? And then the demographics, everyone from youth to seniors are participants in sports tourism, whether they're participating or if they're going to watch. So we've covered the first three. Now we'll get local, we'll start talking about Enid. And I put Sports ETA up there, I've been referring to National Association of Sports Commissions. When I went to the conference in Knoxville back in May, when I got there, it was called NASC, when I left, they rebranded and it's called now Sports ETA. And that's called Sports Events and Tourism Association. They changed their name because that pretty much basically tells you what they do. National Association of Sports Commissions, you kind of had a question, but this actually says, "We do sports and tourism." And this is the brochure that we handed out. I'll put these here at the table and you can kind of pass those around and take a look as we go through that. But we worked with a PR team, Cook Communications out of Oklahoma City. We asked them to come up with that phrase that'll help Enid sell its sports and they came up with, "Where the winds come sweeping down the plains." And when I handed those brochures out, I had two different people tell me, "Well, dang it, now I've got that song stuck in my head." And I said, "Exactly." That's what I want you to remember. So go through some of the facilities. You all know David Allen. How many of you were at the World Series final game? 4,200 people were there, jam-packed, you could not hardly walk around the concourse, but it was an amazing atmosphere there. We have the Stride Bank Center. They do the bull riding, they have the flying aces, they also have basketball wrestling, all kinds of different sporting events. That's a great facility that we have here that is available for sports tourism.
Roller derby?
Roller derby, absolutely. Absolutely. There's, like I say, the possibilities are pretty limitless. There's the new soccer complex proposed, seven fields. That was a big hit when I was at this conference. They wanted to know a lot of questions about that, when that was going to open up, if there was going to be any turf fields compared to the natural grass, and when was the rest period for the fields? And a lot of those questions are, you know, to be determined, so we will definitely let you know on that. The horseshoe pits out at Meadow Lake Park. Very thankful that the city agreed to make these handicap accessible. 16 courts, more than any other facility in Oklahoma. And it's being used a lot. It's being used a lot. Special Olympics has been using them as well as all the different types of tournaments. Last year, they had an Oklahoma-Kansas border war and we're bringing a regional tournament to Enid Labor Day weekend. And that will bring competitors from about four states. This is our disc golf course out at Northwestern. They built an 18-hole course, but really to get it into what is called competitive specs or requirements, they only really have room for about 14. Northwestern's land is basically, that's hedges right there. So Northwestern's land is here and then kind of goes along here and all of this area is Northwestern. This over here is NOC. I have been working with Corey Buller as well as the Head of the Enid Disc Golf Association and I've been in contact with Dr. Evans at NOC about the possibility of making these four holes permanent. This is actually on NOC land, this is that practice softball field here. They don't use this land at all, it's just, they just mow it. That's all they do with it. And Dr. Evans seems very enthusiastic about letting this happen, just working out some logistics on that. So once we get that, then we will have what is considered a championship facility to where we can bring some regional tournaments in. We're looking currently at a second site. I'd love to get it at NOC where the old golf course was, but running into a little bit of resistance there. Corey has identified an area at Meadow Lake Park that could possibly work. So again, this is all just kind of in the development stages, but we're getting there and disc golf is another big sport that's really been taking off. 580 trails, southeast part of town, seven miles of trail developed to this point. I know the range really hindered Brian and his group to try to get this going even further, but we had a gentleman here from a sports magazine, they sell sports tourism through this magazine that they have, and he was so impressed with the facility that they had to this point, the layout, what can be done with this. Right now, it's mountain bike trails, but there's a possibility of a BMX track going in as well. And in Knoxville, I met with the Head of BMX and they're building their new headquarters in Tulsa. And, but the Head of the organization lives in Florida, but he says, "I'm in Tulsa so much, I may as well live there." And he would like to have his partner in Tulsa and him come over, take a look at the facility, have Brian give them another tour, and then get some ideas on where we can go next with this facility. So again, just working on trying to get everybody scheduled to work there, but very excited about the possibility that we have there. Oh, I think Commissioner Waddell mentioned pickleball earlier. The Denny Price Family YMCA Pickleball Tournament that was just held a month ago had 132 players from four different states that came here. Pickleball is definitely growing. And if you look at this little quote right down here at the bottom, "The number of places is more than doubled since 2010, popularity because of community centers, PE classes, Y facilities, and retirement communities." This is a sport that anyone from 10 to 80 or 90 can play. In fact, on the USA Pickleball website, they were talking about their national tournament and they have a 90 to 95 age division. So this is, this is another one of, you know, we're talking golf is a lifetime sport, this is also very much a lifetime sport and it's just growing so much in popularity. So very thankful to the city for making those pickleball courts outside, the tennis courts that are going to convert to pickleball courts. Because we hear from players, and Sean Buckles is a national-level player that runs the pickleball tournament, works at the Y, and he says these pickleball players, they would much rather play outside. If they had their choices, they'd rather be outside than inside. So we don't have the outside facility, but we're working on converting those Main Street courts, very appreciative of the city's efforts in that. And then we have the Chisholm Trail Expo Center. I don't know if you've ever been out there during one of their indoor track meets, but that is shoehorned in there. It will not fit anywhere else. And all the different teams that come, you can just see, these are just the 6As that are there and you can see Norman and Union and Yukon is here, just a lot of different people that are coming. They actually have two weekends of tournaments, two weeks apart. So they have a weekend for 6A and then a weekend for 5 through 1A. They skip a week and then they do it again. And these high school coaches love it. It's one of the only indoor track meets in the state and it gets these athletes kind of primed and ready for track season. These are some of the organizations that I visited with at this conference. It was kind of a reverse trade show where the organizations had the booths and the destinations went around and made appointments in order to meet with these folks. So they say, USA BMX, Professional Disc Golf, Primetime Sports is one that puts on a lot of basketball tournaments in the Texas area. He's looking to possibly expand here. The American Junior Golf Association is already, they tentatively got a date and they're still working out a few logistics to bring an event here next summer. And that will be over 150 players, which means 150 parents at least, if not 300, and they're going to be here about five, six days. Horseshoes, we looked at, of course, you know, synchronized swimming, don't laugh when I saw, when I went to see synchronized swimming, but our Enid First Team has kind of been dreaming a little bit about where we could possibly go in the next five to 10 years. And one of the things that was, that we have talked about is an editorial. And so I went there with the understanding, you know, we don't have a facility yet, what are the specs? What do we need to make this right for you to consider coming if and when we build it? So that's the reason that I visited with synchronized swimming. Soccer is huge, obviously. The Region 2 Soccer Postseason Tournament is moving to Enid, starting this fall. I don't know that the Region 2 has actually announced the dates as of yet, but it is a three-year contract. It's going to be at Selby Stadium until the new complex is ready to go. And the Region 2 Director has said, "We would like to bring all of our championship events to Enid." They've already got baseball here and now they're bringing soccer here. They have basketball and one other. I'm sorry, I don't remember the other. But they have four different sports that they run and he would like to eventually, the Region 2 Director is from Seminole, he's the AD at Seminole, and he would like to see all of the championship events come to Enid. So pretty much that's everything that I've covered. I want to show you one other quote, I won't read the whole thing, I'll let you do that, but this is from the mayor in Marshall, Minnesota, a population of just over 13,000. And the back half of that quote is kind of what I want to focus on, that the properties were filled with business travelers during the week, but the weekends had vacancies. So I draw as sports and families will travel with their youngsters for tournaments. And I looked at that and said, "He could be living in Enid, Oklahoma," I say the exact same thing. So that's where we're at and I will be happy to take any questions. Either I put you all to sleep or I cover it, okay? One of the two. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Item number four, update on Meadow Lake Park Low Water Crossing project.
Yes, the Commission had asked to get an update on this project back during budget time and in fact, budgeted this as a project, the low-water crossing. So today, we're going to get an update on that. About 90% complete. The Engineer, Brett Kabinus, is here and I don't know, is Jason or Chris, you want to introduce him? Brett, you've been on before?
I've been on before. This is not...
And you've seen the presentation already? You have it in your iPads?
Well, thank you. Brett Kabinus with Kabinus Engineering and thank you for allowing me to come back to God's country. And thank you for allowing me to come back to God's country here in western Oklahoma, where it's nice and warm. Growing up in Canton, this is almost like home. Just a quick plug for your sports entertainment and event. I'm a parent of a, two girls that play travel soccer for the past 10 years. And those numbers might actually be a little bit low on what is spent on travel and weekends, especially for two girls, because, yes, they play one soccer game in the morning, they have, they rest the afternoon to go to the mall, or the movies, or restaurants. So, those numbers might be a little bit low. Anyways, we're here to talk about the update on the pedestrian crossing at Meadow Lake Park. And I hope you all have had a chance to quickly review this. Going back, originally, our scope of work was to find a crossing suitable to get people from the north side of the park to the south side of the park. We did a preliminary engineering study back in late 2017, early 2018, that basically came back with about four different options. The options that you all chose, asked us to go forward with, was the low-water crossing below the spillway here at the lake, but before the railroad bridge, and then obviously before US-81 Bridge. With that, that's a 10-foot-wide trail that comes down, traverses across the creek, and then back up. It's ADA compliant, getting to this point, back over on the parking on the south side through there. We were also asked to look at a Part B, as you might be able to say, is some connectivity to this low-water crossing, mainly looking at connectivity from the playground area here, along the parking and adjacent to the drive in that area to the new trail. And then also connectivity to an existing trail that comes from the west, who I believe is Fairway West Channel Trail. And then have a connection point that comes down through the trail, or through the park, to where our low-water crossing is. So, now, we have developed a little bit of connectivity to some of your other trail systems that would also have an opportunity to continue to go east through there. Oh, no. Sorry about that. All right, so really, the first part of this is the low-water crossing. This photo is taken looking a little back towards the spillway, which is in this area right in here, where adjacent to the railroad bridge. And just beyond us or behind this photo is Highway 81. And I do this because we do have a location that the low-water crossing is going to be in generally this area right here. We have a rendering coming up in another slide. But the low-water crossing typically is going to be a series of five 60-inch diameter pipes, five-foot diameter pipes. And we wanted to get that down low enough that on normal rain events, say the two-year rainstorm, water would pass through there without overtopping. But whenever we get through a rain event somewhere above between the five and the 10-year event, obviously, it would overtop the low-water crossing, hence the name, through there. But we wanted to make sure that this was something that could be constructed, that would withstand larger rain events, such as we had in May here earlier this year. So, it is out of concrete. We do have concrete through here. But one of the other things, when we did our hydraulic analysis of this, we noticed some of the velocities in the channel and the side slopes were a little more than what normal established Bermuda grass would take. So, we added a armament. It's basically a geosynthetic fabric that allows grass to grow through, but until the grass gets established, this will help with erosion. It's a lot more slightly than large diameter rocks and ripraps and things of that nature. So, we did add this. This was something added after we did the conceptual design report, so it did add a little bit of cost, and we'll touch on that in just a moment. But that's kind of the technical details through there. It will have a handrail across through there. Again, water and kids are going to play, so we wanted at least to have some type of a barrier so they wouldn't go down with their bicycles across the low-water crossing. Here's the rendering, and this was kind of quick, again, looking back at the two previous slides. If we were looking back towards Meadow Lake itself and the spillway, this is kind of what you would see. Now, again, it's not refined, but at least gives you an idea of, on small rain events, this is where the water would come up to on smaller rain events and still be able to traverse the creek and work your way to the south through there. We talked about the Part B, where we had some connectivity through here. This first section on the north side of Meadow Lake would probably pick up somewhere generally along the north edge of the existing parking lot. We would have a separator curb, so we do separate parking from the trail itself as we work through and come across trail entrance and then down through along and adjacent to the lake. This also has a component where the boat dock that's being designed or is under construction has a location for that to be picked up as well. So, we did give some forethought on that. The south side, again, we're going to have a five-foot curb, or excuse me, five-foot sidewalk along the back of the curb. So, in essence, it would come right along in this area, adjacent to the existing parking stalls, and have some connectivities to the pavilion, and then ultimately, the low-water With that, the cost estimates. This is where we did have some additional cost in the Part A, and that's about $57,000. And you see the high-performance turf reinforcement. That wasn't originally in our scope of work when we did the conceptual design study. We feel like it is something that is needed, again, to protect from erosion versus the unsightly rocks and ripraps that are tough to maintain through there. So, with our 10% contingency, we're around $347,000. Part B, that was an added part, that's about $223,000. And then there's the, what we call the construction items, the traffic control, the construction staking, the contractor's mobilization. Regardless if you pick Project A, or if you want to only do Project B, those are costs that are going to be associated regardless of which item you want to pick. And those are around $50,000. So, if you were to lump all of them together, that number, as you can see, is somewhere around $617,000, and that does include some contingencies. Now, where we're at today, we've submitted to Mr. Gdansky 90% construction plans. I have those with me if anybody cares to look at them. There are still some minor details that we need to look at, but overall, the design is pretty well set. We feel comfortable on that. We need to do some additional signing and some striping, just review some details to make sure we've got everything taken care of. We think there's probably about 30 days' worth of work at the most on that. We'll update our cost estimates. These estimates are from earlier in the year through Department of Transportation bid items for this kind of general area, and then some of the other stuff that we've seen cost in other locations throughout the state of Oklahoma. The permitting process, right now, we have, really, the process will be a no-rise certificate with the local floodplain administrator. We'll still deal with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a 404 permit, which will probably be under the nationwide permit. In our discussion with them back earlier in this year, they did not have a problem with the concept, but they wouldn't say that they would approve it until they got to see final design plan. So, we still need to do that. But the biggest potential hurdle is if we need to go to FEMA and get this permitted, which the local floodplain administrator has the authority to permit. We just need to let FEMA know about it. As long as we do not increase the base flood elevation, which we are not doing with this project, FEMA should be okay with everything on that. And then submit the bid documents to the city, and we are ready and off to fitting the project. So, with that, questions?
I'll just say that for a while, this has been talked about, so it's finally here. There's some commissioners that have made sure that we got the money in the budget, so we have $300,000 to focus on the low-water crossing. Hopefully, we'll be able to fine-tune that estimate, or we'll see what, when the bids are open, what really costs. The other two pieces, the north and south side, are to connect everything together. And as we've talked about before, we have a design from the southwest corner of Meadow Lake to Vance now. So, when we're done with this, we'll have the, we'll have the complete design from Meadow Lake, where the existing trail is in the west part of Meadow Lake, all the way to Vance. And we'll have the low-water crossing funded. We'll be looking at funding the other pieces. One of the things I wanted to ask you while you were here, you talked about the trail, the low-water crossing, the trail on the north side's 10-foot, low-water crossing's 10-foot. The reason it's five on the south side is because of the slopes. And so, that could be made 10-foot wide, but it would probably come an additional cost. So, we thought that would be good for what we were doing, so.
Quite serves the purpose.
Yeah.
Finally.
And so, what we're looking at is about 30 days to finish up the plans. I'm guessing about 60 to get it out to bid. And then it's about a 60-day process to get them back, and get them from the commission, and get them doing so. So, more good stuff happening in Meadow Lake. In fact, the boat dock is already done, so.
Outstanding.
Get tight ends.
So, we can go fish?
Yes, and ride paddle boats. There you go.
I think I'll fish.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
All right. Next item up is item number five. Carol, would you like to talk to us about update on marijuana laws?
Um, that big pile there, about an inch and a half, about 300 pages, is all of the various bills that they've been passing that involve medical marijuana. And it is a big issue for laws. Okay, so, I'll just go through them quickly. Senate Bill 5112, that goes into effect November 1st, amended 12OS 1560, and provided, provides what happens if a medical marijuana business goes insolvent, or if a medical marijuana licensee dies in possession of medical marijuana. I would never have thought that was important, but now that they're telling me about it, I'm thinking, "Well, we need to know." Okay. Smoking in public places in the Indoor Workplaces Act has been amended. It currently prohibits smoking or vaping marijuana in the same way that smoking tobacco is restricted. Now, vaping tobacco is not restricted in the same way, but smoking and vaping marijuana is restricted under the act. Okay, then we go on to two different, we get into the weeds a little bit. Okay. Senate Bill 1030 amends 63OS 420B. It provides, it's close to the same law, but possession of up to 1.5 ounces by a person who can state any medical condition, whether they have a license or not, the, it then provides that the misdemeanor carries a $400 fine. That has been the law ever since the measure that the voters voted on passed. This is the new part. If law enforcement stops a person whose identity can be ascertained, and that identity is ascertained, and they answer the officer's pertinent questions, then the officer is to write a citation for the offense and release them upon his, their own recognizance, unless they've committed another violation of the law. This goes into effect August 30th, and I will be bringing back a ordinance for our next meeting that will put this into effect. The pertinent questions, I'm assuming, are kind of the questions that generally non-custodial stops by police officers occur. Identity, I would assume, could be justified by a current government ID with a picture. Okay.
Wait, fourth question. Does the marijuana then get left with the person getting the citation?
That is unspecified.
Really? You'd think that would be something that's specified.
Yes.
It's like we should, if it's just citation, we shouldn't take their stuff.
Right. I think that maybe there is a difference of opinion at the police department, but I would think that.
Let's not take anybody's weed who can, seems unnecessary.
Well, we can talk about that when we do the ordinance.
Awesome.
Great. Okay, 425 is really a big, has lots in it. 425 protects medical marijuana license holders who are tenants or students. Tenants aren't supposed to be denied a lease, and students aren't supposed to be unable to attend school. Visitation and custody of children is not supposed to be affected unless the behavior of the person creates an unreasonable danger to the safety of the minor. So, if it's just that the, I guess, that the parent or foster parent has a medical marijuana card, as long as they're being safe about it, they can continue to have visitation and custody. And specifically, it clarifies that there is no presumption of neglect or childhood endangerment by just having a, you know, one of these licenses. It also prohibits persons with medical marijuana licenses from being unduly withheld from state-issued licenses, including concealed carry permits. But it could also be things like attorneys, doctors, architects, all these professions have licenses with the state of Oklahoma. So, the thought is that they shouldn't, unduly. Now, you know, what does unduly mean? I'm assuming that means that there needs to be a rational reason why a license would be a problem. Okay. It also clarifies that municipalities may follow standard planning and zoning procedures to determine which zoning districts are appropriate for locating marijuana-licensed premises and businesses where marijuana is cultivated, grown, processed, stored, and manufactured. Now, the interesting point is that it doesn't necessarily say "sold," and so dispensaries that do not combine the other licenses probably are only, continue to only be restricted by the prohibition against locating within 1,000 feet of any public or private school. We then go on to the very exciting Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Patient Protection Act. It clarifies that the amounts of medical marijuana that are found in 420, that's the different kinds, which include ounces on your person, six mature plants, seedling plants, possession of concentrated marijuana, edible marijuana, and, okay, those are all cumulative, this section provides. So, for instance, you can have six mature marijuana plants and six seedling plants. You can have one ounce of concentrated marijuana and 72 ounces of edible marijuana in your home. 4278B provides municipal, prohibits municipalities from requiring city licenses for patients and caregivers to possess, purchase, cultivate, or transport marijuana. So, we could not require additional licenses for the patients and caregivers. Paragraph C clarifies that residential and commercial properties or businesses may prohibit the smoking or vaping of medical marijuana within the premises or within 10 feet of the entryway. It also indicates that the use of other marijuana products that are not smoked or vaped is not prohibited. Then, 4278H provides that employers, and this goes into effect August 30th, that employers may not refuse to hire an applicant, or discipline or discharge an employee solely on the basis of a marijuana license unless of a marijuana license unless required by federal law. No employee may refuse to hire an applicant or discharge or discipline an employee on the basis of a positive drug test unless the person does not have a medical marijuana license, or the licensee possesses, consumes, or is under the influence of medical marijuana while on the job, or the position involves safety-sensitive duties. And they define safety-sensitive duties. That includes firefighting, carrying a weapon, operating public utilities, handling hazardous material, materials, operation of motor vehicles or machineries, and also the direct care of children. 2711 provides that caregivers' licenses have the same rights to possess marijuana and marijuana products and mature and immature plants as patients. But unless they have their own patient license, they cannot use the marijuana or consume the marijuana. Caregivers may, it also provides that caregivers may deliver the products to their authorized patients, and they may possess the cumulative quantity of their patients, the quantity of their patients. So when they're transporting the marijuana product to their patients, they can have the cumulative quantity. And however, they are limited to five patients. Now, no one has discussed, okay, does that mean that a caregiver can drive around with more than 1.5 ounces? Could they drive around with, you know, five of those 1.5 ounces? No one's talking about that. That is interesting. Okay. 427-12 allows marijuana, this one is just fascinating. It allows medical marijuana patients and caregivers to grow marijuana on real property owned by the patient or on property the owner has provided written permission. The marijuana cannot be accessible to the general public, and it can't be, and no plants can be visible from any street adjacent to the property. Now, they were really thinking, because they decided that visible, they defined visible, defined as viewable by a normal person with 20/20 eyesight without the use of a device to improve viewing at a distance or to assist with vantage point. So I'm assuming that means you can't use binoculars and you also can't use, like, I don't know, a ladder or something to climb up and then look down or something. Okay. And this, it will be very important to the fire department. No extraction equipment or process may be used that includes butane, propane, carbon dioxide, potentially hazardous material in a residential property. Now, let's see. 427-16 allows transporters with medical marijuana licenses to maintain a licensed premises to store temporarily the marijuana products and use such premises as a centralized distribution point. So those are legal. And the vehicles used by these licensed transporters, that does not mean the caregivers. That means all the business persons that are transporting and then the official transporters. They must be equipped with GPS trackers. They must have locked and labeled containers to store the packaged marijuana, and such locked storage cannot be accessible to the driver during transit. Meanwhile, they decided that we didn't have enough licenses. So they decided we needed to have a special license for medical marijuana research and medical marijuana educational facilities, and there are different requirements for those. The medical marijuana educational facility can only be run by a 401(c)(3) corporation. Okay, we finally go on to the Medical Marijuana Waste Management Act. It goes into effect November 1st. Waste includes unused, surplus, returned, or out-of-date marijuana and plant debris, including dead plants and all unused plant parts, except it specifically excludes roots, root balls, stems, stalks, and fan leaves. Okay, so, commercial licensees, we'll explain it. We'll explain it in just a minute. Okay, so commercial, so commercial licensees, which are like all the different kind of businesses, you know, the growers, the extractors, the processors, including the dispensers and some, and probably everybody but the medical marijuana research and the medical marijuana educational facilities. Okay, they have to dispose of medical marijuana waste at disposable facilities. So there's going to be these medical marijuana waste disposal facilities that have special ways of disposing of this waste without the people that are nearby getting high, I guess. I guess that's what's going on. And supposedly, these roots, stems, stalks, and fan leaves can be disposed of, less technically onerous methods can be used to do that. And therefore, commercial licensees may dispose of root balls, stems, fan leaves, and seeds without utilizing the service of a medical marijuana waste disposal facility. And they can be destroyed by open burning, incineration, burying, mulching, composting, or other approved techniques unless we prohibit it by a municipal ordinance. And at this training we received, we were told that root balls, stems, fan leaves, and seeds, you know, the danger of allowing low-tech procedures for getting rid of that is less than out-of-date surplus or unused marijuana, which until, I kind of had assumed that until things were legal, there was no out-of-date marijuana. I mean, maybe there was, I don't know, but I doubt, I don't know. I think that's probably part of the new legalization, that there is surplus, out-of-date, and unused marijuana that must be securely and carefully destroyed. Okay, that's the update. There's a lot more. I added in some of the footnotes, which aren't in this, all sorts of interesting little, you know, several of these laws have like a couple versions. So we had laws passed on the same day, signed into law on the same day by the governor. They're all law, but there's differences in them. And so the computer OSCN website that codified stuff has version 1, version 2, version 3, and they don't even try to explain which version. And some of it affects us because there's provisions for the code department to provide inspections and things like that, and the versions conflict. So it's fascinating for nerdy attorney, but at any rate, it's certainly a growing field.
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, too, that those rules all change at the Gates Advanced Air Force Base on a federal installation, right? Totally.
Oh, absolutely.
I said you'll bring us any ordinances we need modified near state law.
Yes. Yes. I'll hope for you to be sitting here, but.
We have already started to deal with this issue.
We briefly talked about revenue that's coming from these dispensaries. Did we have a chance to look at any of that? Are we getting any dollars from that?
We have not, so we, we probably are getting some dollars, but we haven't had a chance to look. The Oklahoma Tax Commission, through confidential process, allows us to look at businesses in town to see their specific info. I don't believe we've had time to do that yet, and I don't even know that some of them have been in business for several months at least that I've noticed, and some of them seem to be new. So we'll be in the process of trying to get some information to see that. I've noticed that there's a lot, and I just think from economics, there'll probably be an consolidation at some point in the industry, like there is in any industry, I think. I could be wrong.
It, one of the, one of these laws does allow the city to pass a sales tax on.
Just on marijuana?
Just on marijuana.
If it becomes very profitable.
There you go.
We need money, so.
We'll take it.
It spins.
Yeah, to the Colonel's point, he may have people that live downtown, work downtown and all that, but they could find their clearance in jeopardy if they are obeying the law on the other side of the gate, so that's.
Sure. Also, you know, we have people that have CDLs and that marijuana is still a prohibited substance for marijuana, and the safety-sensitive employee covers quite a few. I mean, the police department, the fire department, people who work in the utility services. That's actually a new, new. They weren't providing for that before the legalization of medical marijuana.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Carol, and then we'll see this come back later, right?
Yes, and the one, the one on the possession probably will go straight to regular session next time. I mean, we can put it on for study, but we need to get it in place before August 30th.
Okay. Thank you. We have nothing else. We're going to adjourn and reconvene upstairs at 6:30.
My love, everybody, remind everybody 9 o'clock in the morning for the airport.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just an informal, not for business meeting, but the airport terminal tomorrow is going to, grand opening is tomorrow at 9 o'clock. Anybody who wants to be there? So I know Senator Randhak is going to be there.
Thank you for watching the ENA Television Network broadcast of the ENAD City Council Study Session. Replays of the meeting will air on Channel 12 and 112, including a live stream of the meeting at enatv.org.